...justice.
We started. Use this as a call to the community for any ones who would like to speak to us about anything that's not on agenda tonight. This is not. Oh, sorry. Um, a call to the community. For any, this is a call for any citizen who would like to address our commission on any non-agenda item. Is there any requests to speak? Okay. Um, so our business item A, approval of the minutes. And we're.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Sorry.
Motion A second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Um, next up B, design plans. Residential request to allow five-foot tempered glass pool at small tents at 595 North Haraway. Um, and Mr. Foku, you introduce us to the project and then that's when the applicant can speak.
Thank you Chair of DRB members, John Froch, our new client consultant working with Daniel Woody on his projects tonight. Uh, the first one that we have an applicant here tonight is a residential application, 595 North of Haraway. Existing home, beautiful single-story home on cold sack. And the applicant would like to construct a fence. Uh, for cooling or spot of tempered glass. Here's the site, so it's south of Camelback. West of Iser, you can see it here, obviously, Alvin Glen. Again, cold stack lot, golf course. Uh, this is a rendering, so um. Basically, um, it would be a enclosure about five feet tall on the whole. Um, there are some detailed specs that the applicants provided, those were most of the sheets of the DRB package today. Um, on the best practices of how to use this type of, rather than wrought iron, use this type of enclosure for a cooler spot. And here's a front elevation of your property, 25 acres zone R1. As I said, single-story home, about 2,673 square feet. Here's a block plan, um, of the property. And then this is an example that the applicant provided of existing enclosure where the tempered glass has been used elsewhere. We do have a section in our zoning code revering property under responsibility for uh, cool fencing. Our ordinance doesn't really recognize this type of building material, um, that being said, we're perfectly okay with it. The section from 30.04 is each property owner shall landscape and maintain all property, including streets or isolation. Property owners must provide a wall fence around the street and pool, distributed in the city road codes. Existing building code, like I said, a little bit dated, would not anticipate this kind of building material. For a this type of enclosure. We have reviewed it internally and feel that we're comfortable with it, um, we recommend approval of the DRB application and the cool spot enclosure. Uh, we're just suggesting that the applicant continue to work with a licensed contractor to be able to work on. And the applicant will speak your feedback to you from the owner directly.
Okay, thank you. Could I, could you just give us your name and, and any additional information maybe we should know?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm actually here on behalf of the homeowners themselves. So I work for Alverton Falls and landscape, so we've been in business in the valley over four years, uh, and operated for that time. Um, and we've been building all over the valley throughout that time. I, um, this homeowner came to me as a referral from their seventy dollars and a million pool for them, uh, in the itself. Um, and they have beautiful property that opens up to the, to the, uh, to the golf course. No, the biggest reason that they bought this house is, is for that view, uh, to look out. There's no kind of back property line wall that they have within their property. Their two neighbors to their left and to their right do. Uh, it's about four foot tall, I'm not trying to throw anyone else under the bus, but it's about four foot tall, super reliable if you're any kind of athletic individual. Um, and they really just want to be able to put in a local spa out there, something that's a little bit more. Um, substantial in terms of its aesthetic, its appeal, rather than kind of a buy it from the market, you know, from Costco and put it in the backyard. So it really add a nice touch to the backyard. Uh, but we need to make sure that it's safe, uh, because anything over eighteen inches of water needs to be protected against any kind of drowning. Now, this kind of spa would have a cover that would go over it and would be lockable as well. Uh, but I myself have a four and one-year-old and I take this very seriously as today, as they've raised a whole full case themselves. Um, and with this, they didn't ever, they don't want to take away from that beautiful look, uh, going back up to the golf course. Uh, and so, um, I, I've worked with many clients throughout the valley on being able to provide a tempered glass. Uh, that is, uh, very sus- very substantial in terms of its, uh, it's, it's not a cheap product for them. Uh, very nice look, but it doesn't take away from the look out to the golf course. And so I, I, you know, ask you guys to, to review that and think through. It, it's not going to be a full property line wall, uh, however, just kind of that enclosure, as you put together that enclosure around that spa, so it really segments it. It sits far back away from the golf course itself, uh, right really against the house. Um, as you can see here, it comes off the house maybe twenty feet, uh, to give it enough space, uh, adds to their patio. But that actually sits about, uh, probably fifty feet off from the golf course itself. A big established, uh, orange citrus tree off to the left from here, uh, so a lot of protection from the golf course itself. But again, tempered glass, so any golf balls coming through there, we're not going to be dealing with shards of glass all over the place either. Uh, but it provides the safety, security to prevent any kind of drowning. The door that goes with this is self-closing, self-latching, that meets all requirements, uh, for cities, uh, throughout the valley as well. What questions do you have?
Where, where is the door? I, I don't, I don't.
I don't.
I obviously see a patio or a.
Yeah, I don't have it in this exact one, but what I, if you know what I mean going up. Um, I would actually put a door, uh, right in this section, so they'd be able to walk out of a lot of the patio. And so the door would be in this area, uh, but then they would also have a self-closing, self-locking mechanism on the actual house exiting out through that area as well to be code. So it really kind of segregate that section off.
Yeah, I, I've noticed that there was no access from the rest of the patio on it, so.
My, my 3D modeling isn't, isn't, uh.
You'll work on that, I'm sure.
Yeah, we'll, we'll continue to work on it, but, uh, you know, as, as best as I can to try to.
Call, call us back. You have any clips that are going on the side to the glass or?
Uh, no, man, there's actually two.
Can't just do the vertical, okay?
Uh, yes, so they pour, uh, they pour an eight-by-eight continuous footer. Then each pane of glass has double spigots that come up to hold it in place. Uh, and so then it's frameless as well, so it keeps a really clean look, uh, but that holds, uh, wind loads. You can see in the actual packet of information, it'll break down wind loads, uh, everything that you need in there, uh, to be able to, uh, to sustain that. But it's a continuous, uh, continuous footer that these spigots, each one would have two, so then again, the 3D rendering doesn't do it justice. Each, each panel would have two spigots that come up, uh, and then it's a continuous footer that comes through here with one, uh, number four, uh, steel throughout that main force.
Do you have any clips on the corner?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's, I think if you guide, is it like a height thing? If it was taller, would it, I'm seeing a ladder over the window?
Um, not, I mean, as far as, there are a few additional pictures that the, uh, so Sonoran Glass actually does provide that. Um, so if you actually go back to the sample picture, you can see an example of the door. So this, the door itself would be framed, so you would have much more of a frame in terms of that door itself. And then as you can see, two double spigots to hold that five-foot.
Those clips are a lot bigger than what it's on the other door, or?
Yes, excuse me, I'm sorry, not a problem. Yes, that's, that's a limitation to, to what my 3D, uh, rendering really is, so it's really more of just an artistic rendition. And I have many other, uh, pictures as well of other, you know, cool enclosures. If you wanted to see them, I would have to share.
So the, um, where is the, are you actually being in the, I'm right, I assume you are. Where is the, the mechanical equipment going to go for the, associated with the spa? Is it all just like?
So the spa itself is self-contained, so a performance spa, it's got, it basically just runs electric. And then within that masonry build around, it's going to have its own, you'd be, it's a clean sanitation system as well as its own heater, electronic, uh, within there. So no additional equipment that's necessary for that, so no additional ice or anything like that that they can eat.
Okay, and so, and what are the materials then that, cause I mean, since we'll, you'll see the materials from golf course?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and that's, uh, what the client has, um, they really like is a tile, uh, so a nice modern tile, uh, that can go on the face of it. Uh, so this on the patio here, uh, we haven't finalized this, of course, they're waiting for, for it to be able to move forward. However, this would be, uh, wood gr- uh, like looking wood grain, but it's actually porcelain paper. Uh, so their patio opens up and this will admit exactly what they have inside, so it's an inside-outside kind of continuation. Then on the outside here, uh, would be some, uh, twelve by twenty-four, um, inch, um, basically porcelain tiles that go vertically on that. And then, uh, continue on with that porcelain, um, kind of coating that can go on top of it as well. And then the inside is going to be a, uh, I guess silver, uh, insert, like a pearl insert.
The, the examples you were showing are like commercial projects, is that right or?
Uh, here are, no, this one would be residential, um, and then I've got a few others that are also residential, and then I do have some that are commercial.
But the same product is approved for commercial use and?
Yep, yeah, like this is, um, the Miami Bridge. This one would be, uh, for a commercial project here. Same with this one, it looks like this one's community pool as well. Same with this, this, this seems to be an apartment complex, uh, as well, and then this is the same one that's up there.
Yeah, I have, I'm cool with the church. My, my, uh.
They'll forgive you a lot of us.
Yeah, well, um, more and more, it's really expensive, so not.
It's discouraging, huh?
Yeah, not many people want to build that out, they'll usually go like a wrought iron fence, they'll go. But, but not many people don't have full exterior property on it.
Yeah.
So this is a very unique property where they bought it specifically because it didn't have that, they had that ability to walk out on the golf course. And so, I mean, and I've got, I've got pictures of the property looking out as well, that makes any, any kind of a difference to you, but, um. That was, that was one of their biggest reasons, and they really want to be able to have a spa back there, uh, and so, you know, me trying to rack my brain on everything I possibly do. Uh, I reached out to this guy, Daniel, uh, Daniel has been a phenomenal resource for me, and I really appreciated everything you've done to help me, kind of guided me through this process. So I appreciate all your time as well.
Yes, my other last question was maintenance and does it get dirty and who has to clean it?
Yeah, I know.
I'm like, that's the one thing that would, would take me, I'm like, nope.
It's totally right.
Not playing in my desk.
Yeah, it's, uh, hose it down and then tweed it, you know, it's like a shower.
It's the same as the door, right?
Yeah.
Right now, it's still washing with this, there's a lot, a lot of glass.
That's true. Actually, they always want to do that. His son, his son is going to do it. His son is going to force him to do it. They have my real kids.
But also, I guess it'd be so much when you have a friend, so you gotta maintain things.
I would think in, in this particular instance, that this is really not, it's not a line of sight thing for me, but that's just up next to the house.
Yeah.
Enclosing a, a hotel.
Yeah. Keep it minimal too, with the cold, when it's cold and you want to use your jacuzzi, keep the wind off of you too.
Yeah, there you go, sure.
Alright.
Absolutely.
Right, any other questions for the applicant or staff? Uh, someone need to give a motion?
I'd like a motion to approve, uh, the, uh, glass enclosure for 595 Haraway. Um, based on, um, the information provided.
Hold second. Motion A second, any further discussion? And then all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. I'm going to be very excited to call back. Thank you so much. Daniel, thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
I'm, I'm having lunch tomorrow with Dick Mees.
Oh, yeah.
He's next door.
Oh, yeah, he won't mind.
He won't, oh.
And Susan and Rachel, congratulations, you guys went in today.
Oh, yeah.
If you're excited. Uh, if you don't mind, I'm going to run off to my little two boys.
Your time is up.
So thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Good evening, thanks. Uh, next up on our agenda, design plans. Next is proposed welcome plaza located at the northeast corner of Wigmont Boulevard and Litchfield Road. Okay, so.
Yeah, Chair of, uh, DRB members, this is for a mixed-use project that we're all very familiar with, it's part of Litchfield Square. Project, I'm going to give a brief PowerPoint presentation, then, uh, Woody's got a couple of things to add since he's the overall credit manager for Litchfield Square. So this is the northeast corner of Litchfield, um, rather than Wigmont Boulevard. We're looking for design review approval for not just a bus shelter, but really a welcome center for Litchfield Square. And the best ones that this will show you, this is on City Hall property right on the, the immediate northeast corner of the intersection. Here's the project site, so it's just off, we're located just off the map, uh, from where we are tonight. So again, northeast corner of the intersection. The, uh, underpass underneath Litchfield Road is, uh, just in south of the site. City Hall, we can see just, uh, to the east. Here's a image, uh, facing east on, uh, the north side of Wigmont, so it's roughly point one A, or its size. And again, it's part of Litchfield Square mixed-use project. Uh, the request is that, uh, bus shelter is being designed by our Valley Metro grant. I'm sure you're all familiar, Valley Metro runs the bus system and the light rail system for the metro payments area. The shelter itself will not be constructed until we have a designated bus line on Litchfield Road. We are looking at building, uh, the rest of the welcome center, and we've got some more detailed, um, drawings coming out in the next couple of slides. Some keynotes, kind of hard to see, so number one, uh, would be the bus shelter itself. Two, uh, we're looking at some decorative screen rolls with seating for pedestrians. Three, a plaza with decorative pavement. Four, ballroom lights. Five, a gateway monument, which I understand is already going to improve by DRB and S A and H school. And then obviously, we want the area to be attractive with landscaping, so that's, uh, number six. Some renderings, uh, for DRB, this is, um, just showing how the, the space may function. Another, another view, you can see the road to the south, this one would be, uh, images facing towards the east for seconds. It's what the bus shelter, uh, structure would actually look like, so, uh, shaped facilities, uh, areas for people to get away from the travel needs and the screen. In conclusion, uh, we believe the design really fits in well with, uh, the overall Litchfield Square concept. Provides good aesthetic for the surrounding area. And staff does recommend approval of the application, so it means it was provided by the applicant. I'll turn over to Woody, there's just a couple of lines of design tweaks, um, that he'd like to go over briefly.
Yeah, thanks, I don't have a chair, I'm a permission, um, I'm sorry, bored. So, um, what, what happened here is that we really first came up with the idea of this welcome plaza. Um, as a way to, um, enhance the experience of people arriving at the site, whether it's by bicycle or on their own feet, or, you know, if they're being dropped off at a ride share. Or, you know, whatever, they're arriving at this location, um, you know, a lot of people will just drive into Litchfield Square, but, um. The bus shelter itself and the bus stop, this has been designed and built now for a future bus station, bus stop. Um, because it's shown on the AD, I'm sorry, the MAD 2040 transportation plan, that a bus route will be extended. The currently one that comes north of Old Town Litchfield Road, but will be extended all the way past the airport today sometime before 2040. Uh, that's a long way to follow. But, you know, if we're pretty successful here in attracting a lot of shoppers and buyers and so on from other parts of the valley. You know, it may create more of the demand for a bus route and maybe needed, uh, centered in that. Um, the other thing that, um, I think is important about the bus shelter and the bus stop in general is that, uh, again, if we have a lot of retail. Restaurants, maybe some office, maybe even some residential, um, you know, people who work in the store, who work in the restaurants. You know, might want to ride the bus, you know, to Litchfield Square and back home again, so that's another possibility. And then we wanted to tie it all into the gateway monument sign, which you have seen before, plus there to prove that, comparing sort of sign that. So this kind of ties it all together in, um, as kind of a way to enter the project, if you will, if you're on your theater, if you're on a party or whatever, um, corporate. So, the, the main design change that we've made since these renderings were done is that, you see the sidewalk kind of comes at an angle, I guess it would be kind of to the southeast. From the main sidewalk. We have, um, I didn't think that made sense because we're trying to get people into the center of Litchfield Square. So we have angled that sidewalk back to the northeast. So if you're coming off of the main sidewalk, you'll be, uh, heading a little bit to the northeast, which kind of, you know, uh, aims you in the direction of the center of Litchfield Square. Now, behind it is a developmental lot, and when that lot comes through for development, we will, um, make sure that that sidewalk gets extended. You know, on into the project and connects to either a lawn map or a honeysuckle or whatever makes sense. As John mentioned, um, we, uh, got a grant from, there's a lottery funds, five, that girl, through five, that girl. And it's very restrictive on what you can use the money for, and in our case, the only thing I came up with was a bus shelter. So even though it may not be built for several years, uh, a few years, I like, um, you know, it's not the same energy, but also I had to get the money, get the design, and we can put it on the shelf. And, you know, Litchfield Square is going, buildings are up, and people are coming, there may be, you know, more of a, uh, ride share demand, or. You know, maybe there will be a circular bus or something that will come by here, that, you know, people could use the shelter, you know, in the, in the weather. So that's, that's kind of the story, the, the other thing is, um, for the, for this bus shelter is specifically, I'm not getting the, because I don't know. This boat, this bus shelter is specifically tied into Litchfield Square because again, we want people to know when they get to this point that they are at Litchfield Square. We've got twenty-six foot, for a sign, and, you know, the lettering on the front of the bus shelter, so it should be pretty obvious. But anyway, um, the diamond pattern, um, we, we've already used that on the main restroom awnings. If people are not from the awnings, but they're, you know, shade on, on the building, and then there's a, uh, kind of a shaped structure that goes over the, uh, free work between men's and women's. So that diamond pattern, it graduates from small from bottom to large at the top. That ties back, and somehow it will explain this, they don't have a little platform, a little shoulder, but. This ties back to the original Goodyear Tire diamond pattern that they had on their tires back in the early nineteen hundreds, when they were first producing tires for automobiles. So there's a, you know, kind of a neat tie back to Goodyear Tire, Merck, and Paul's Hill and so on. In terms of the materials, uh, the diamond pattern steel will be Corten steel. Um, and the columns, although they look a little silvery there, I think we're going to end up with, um, something that goes more towards the bottom. But those will be welded steel, um, you know, welded in that pattern and, uh, either painted or powdered or. In, in some shade that, um, you know, complements the Corten steel. There, there, I think that looks a little bit silvery, maybe, uh, maybe, maybe the gray or the brown is okay, I don't know, but, um. You know, if you're concerned about that, I'd be glad to bring your final selections back to, uh, make sure it's comfortable.
I had just a couple, is there a bus turnout?
Yes, um, it's, we didn't actually build, uh, a turnout because, um, the actual start of the turnout would have been in the city of Goodyear. And, um, they were very difficult to deal with in terms of just trying to do some minor, um, you know, minor improvements on the northeast corner of that intersection. You know, vault, kind of vaulted out for the turnout, so we decided to just leave it as a painted turnout for now. Eventually we'll, but, but anyway, that's, to answer your question, that's the third lane, so you've got two travel lanes.
Okay.
And then you got a right turn lane, the right turn doubles as the bus.
Okay, that's like, is like if you're doing ride share stuff, or, you, there's not, they can keep them on, too?
Yeah, yeah, they're out of the travel.
Yeah, okay.
Now, they might, um, be blocking people along their right turn, but that right turn lane is so long.
They can come around.
You know, just like you, you know, you can come up behind the bus, and the bus is, you know, stopped, you can always just go around.
And then the other thing is that the bus thing faces west, so like, any shade.
Mm-hmm.
In term afternoon is going to be hard.
Yeah.
Woody, I have a question for you, what is number two? I think it's number two, that's the thing in the back, what is that?
Uh, that's a, that's a trellis, um, so it has some, lots of vines growing on it. The trellis has alternating panels and they alternate between just a simple mesh, um, and then one that has a laser cut, um, column from motif. Which you'll also see in Litchfield Square, for example, at the corners of the intersections in Litchfield Square with the concrete. Uh, we're going to sandblast that same pattern, that polyphrom pattern into the concrete. Yeah, just the out of all, interesting.
So this is just an architectural thing, it's not really functional or doing.
Well, we'll, we'll probably some boom and bear or vines.
Yeah, no, it's not doing anything.
Yeah, I don't like boom and bear either. Some people do, um, but yeah, we'll probably, you know, have something, I know there's plantings.
If you're helping for people to sit there, I would not put any over there, anywhere near there.
Um, there's a, there's a row of plantings on the other side, on, you know, the opposite side of, uh, of the city hall, I think, um, you have a second? I thought I had any, no. I have, um, plenty of that kind of problem. No, that's all right, um, I think you get the idea, no. So we've got the sidewalk coming off, it's just great concrete, and then we transition to color concrete. And then there's a, there's a row of pavers, and then back to color concrete. And the materials will be identical to what you all approved. For our party. So if you remember back in twenty-one, I think it was, twenty-one, um, we approved this, uh, these colors. You know, the acid ash, the sand once, the pavers.
You know, the acid ash, the sandblasts, the pavers, these, these are the sidewalk for bus stops. And these will be the ones for, but anyway, those same types of concrete, same colors and papers will be used on the, welcome sign, welcome plaque.
Oh, this isn't, this is just for the colored palette. This isn't for?
Yeah, this is something that DRB saw in 2021. And the only reason I brought it was so that you could tie these, these colors and pavers will be the same ones we use.
Over here, yeah, because this isn't, this is what we're looking.
That was my point, yeah.
And that, that might like, kind of introduced like the bus stop not being very shady. I mean, you've got the perforated wall, which type of over, overhead, not a lot of shade. It doesn't, there's no overhang to it.
On the roof in there?
Yeah.
No, they don't have a roof, yeah.
Oh, it has a roof, but it doesn't have hang.
Yeah, it's a simple steel, slightly sloped back.
I was saying, as soon as this stuff goes overhead, there's going to be no shade. Except for, except for right where that screen wall is.
Yeah, which I, I have a little bit of concern, I guess, with that because I just, I think it's, it almost makes it seem very closed off, the bus stop. So then I think, I'm concerned that it might become, you know, kind of, it, it would be difficult to maintain. And it could be like a site that might be convenient for loitering or?
For, for what?
For loitering or, you know, because it's kind of like, it's kind of a nice concealment.
You know, that's one of the downsides of bus stops, bus shelters.
Yeah, well, this one in particular is not that open, actually, in that one spot.
Yeah, but I think it's open enough that, you know, the police have a thing called accept that, which is, you know, they want to be able to see into these kind of structures. So that's one reason why we have the diamond pattern, it's sort of completely hide, yeah, behind a panel. The other thing is that this is right on our material street. And the last thing I want to mention is the bench. What we'll do is we'll put the, if you've seen it at some bus shelters, they have a bench, but it's guided up into seats. Where they have a, you know, the back of the bench, you have a rail coming down to the seat. And they put one of those every two figures, so you know, you can't do whatever it is. So it disperse people from using the seat as a sleeping bag.
Well, as you said earlier, this is how many years out?
Yeah.
I, I, yeah, I don't know.
So how they come back to design review at some future point?
Yeah, or it could be completely redesigned.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we're, we're just taking advantage of the free money that, you know, Valley Metro's having out.
So.
Do you leave it open?
But.
I'll go ahead and mention that we've got another grant from Valley Metro this year. And the obligation I put in was to take this basic bus shelter design and, which is specific to Litchfield Square, and turn it into a standard set of plans for building bus shelters anywhere in the city. But you know, I don't know, 20, 30 years from now, we'll probably need to have 14, 15 bus shelters. You know, if we have enough bus routes following the panel back and so on, I assume. So what we, what we're going to do with that money is to take this basic design and turn it into something that's not specific to Litchfield Square. It could be used anywhere in the city. And, and put those plans on the shelf for a moment, you know. So you know, basically, we've got a couple of free designs that we'll be built someday.
So to that end, like, is, I mean, the requirement to receive that funding, that you need approval from the city, the DRB on the plans? Or, I guess I'm, I'm just kind of curious, like, if we're, if we're not, if it's not going to be built right away, why do you need approval from us right now?
So we could finish the plans, I guess.
I mean, from my perspective, I would like to not make the decision until we have to, you know, because I think that there could be like?
Things change.
Yeah, like when, if somebody comes in and develops the properties right behind it, like there might be some design elements that, you know, this doesn't match with now or?
Yeah, and that's fine, you know, we, we just need to finish the plans so that we can tell the people who gave us the money that, you know, here's what we did. Spent the money, why say?
Um, one other?
Chair, I was going to say, commission board, commission board members, we can, if we could get the DRB approval tonight, if you're comfortable with that, we will, could always come back and present to you if, like, if the parcel like Woody was describing comes in right behind you, if there's a need to change the design, just, you know, always come back and staff it, bring that back to the DRB.
I think that's, that's such a time, I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I guess I just, it's.
Yeah, it seems to me if this is out 10 or 15 years or something, the.
Rather than.
And bus shelters, I want to make clear, the bus shelters, the, the welcome plaza was being.
Right, I think that's really all we're talking about is that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's the only thing, the rest of it, I, I have this, is that sheltered for some reason. I, I would like to shelter people incorporating. Shelter them from the sun is the most important thing in Arizona. So that was my only, my only concern with this design.
I'm a little bit concerned, I guess, about getting a good feel for the scale because I feel like the, the, like, maybe their earlier renderings, they show a bus stop that seems like it's a lot smaller in scale.
It's smaller, open.
Than what's.
That's true.
And I, I mean, personally, this feels pretty overpowering to me, honestly, the, like, not this one, the, like, I don't want to just say. Seems like it's going to be really blocky and it's a strong element. And I don't, I mean, I'm not saying that I have formulated an opinion yet, but I do, I'm just wondering, maybe this is not the place where we want to have a strong line element as the bus stop. You know, I mean, like, I don't, I don't want necessarily, I, I feel like it's a very important thing to have a bus stop, but it maybe is one of those things you don't necessarily want to notice.
I know.
Yeah.
Really strongly against, you're competing against other design houses.
Right, that's what I mean. Because I mean, we have that during, like, you know.
I don't know, if, you know, if you direct through Scottsdale, you'll see that they have numerous bus stop, bus shelter designs. And they're, I don't, I don't think they're paying to, they're the same. So it's almost like they tried to have a bus shelter in, like, Kirland, for example, that kind of, that's in there, or, but somewhere else, but it was a different, you know, the color and materials and colors and designs.
So in that case, it's like a design choice and it's after they already know what the context is, right? And so.
If you leave this up to Valley Metro, you'll get one of those.
Yeah.
Plain Jane.
Green bars.
Yeah.
You know, the, the, you know, they stamp a lot of white thousands. But, yeah, that, that was the intent here, was to be able to take a grant and come up with something that is very unique, you know, throughout the valley. And, you know, that would also say something about Litchfield Square. You know, tie it into that whole historical perspective.
We, a couple things, that monument sign, is that always going to be there? No matter what happens with the bus stop or anything else?
Yes.
That monument sign is going to go there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's a key element of the welcome plaza. So if you remember, the whole reason for having that spire design of a sign there was people, a lot of people are going to be coming here from downtown. So as they are coming up Litchfield Road, boom, there it is, you know, you get close to Wigmont here. Say, okay, I'm here. I mean, I know a lot of people just rely on GPS. I don't care what the science is, you know, GPS, I'm here. But that, yeah, so that was the idea, was to kind of, rather than have that gateway sign stand there by itself, was to, you know, have it be a way to tell people, yeah, you're going to ride. And, you know, if you're coming up in a ride share, you go off right here, walk, walk into the circle. What will be in the future if you're on a bus stop?
I'm sorry, I'm also still just a little bit unclear. And so what are we, if we're just approving the bus stop today or also?
The, the whole open center with the, with the plantings and the city wall. Basically, that whole 0.1 acre. And the only thing I don't really like is the bus stop.
Yeah, so I guess another, if, if we're talking about how it's all, but the other, another concern I have a little bit is the, the preparation of the, like, Corten or whatever it is. I mean, I'm seeing like several different patterns, kind of all within one visual field. And I'm kind of starting to wonder, like, if that's going to feel a little bit, like, it could be powerful maybe if it was, if we, if we picked one and stick with that or, or, I don't know, I just am worried that they're going to compete because there's a lot of perforation, but it's not all the same perforation.
What do you mean, have some of it be solid or?
Yeah.
I'm not sure I understand what you mean.
Well, I guess there's, so the, um, the, uh, found, what is it, the gateway thing, that seems to have some perforation, a, a perforation element.
The, the gateway sign?
Mm-hmm.
It has on the, on the backside of it, it has a palm, it's a palm frond motif.
So that's the same, it's the same palm frond as what's on the, on those, basically?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So would that, would make sense to use that pattern on a bus stop too? Um, rather than choose something different?
Use the palm frond on, on the bus shelter?
On the bus shelter.
We tried that. And it's, it creates weird shaped openings in the front of the, we tried it on the front panel, it creates weird shaped openings. And some of the palm ends are actually sticking out. So, you know, somebody could, kind of, well, not that sharp, but somebody could get caught on, I don't know. We, we tried that and it just didn't look very good. It looked, it looked too busy in that, in that setting, you know.
So, and that's why I'm concerned about those, like, the context of all those things put together. If you're in that space, if like, the, just all the perforation is going to start feeling overpowering a little bit, you know. So I don't mean, if that one that has a trellis, maybe it's been softened by plants.
Yeah, but that's why I think it's good, we don't, we don't want everything to look the same. So that's why we thought, you know, you, we've got the palm frond motif over here, let's use the diamond motif over here because they both connect in Litchfield Square. You will see both of them, you know, throughout the. In fact, I don't think we ever showed you the clock tower. We have, we designed a 32 foot clock tower that goes in the middle of the park. I don't know how that would be built, but it's designed. And that's a very sleek Corten, it uses that same, it has like three veins welded together. Three legs, they're, you know, close together welded. And then it's that diamond, it graduated that diamond pattern, that's a clock, a clock, two little holes. And that's, you know, the idea of the clock, oh, similar to the gateway sign, the idea of the clock tower is that, that's a meeting point. You know, it's a wayfinding element. So, you can, oh, there's a clock tower, so maybe you'll shoot your, you know, or I'll meet you at the clock tower, you know, one more. Doesn't want to store it, John will be presenting to you. Chairman, board members, Daniel brought up a good point. DRB approval is good for one year. So if, if the shelter is being built in a year or things can be serialized on adjacent Litchfield Square, we'll come back and present, present to you. I really felt that we didn't want to take this to completion without getting our.
Any other questions for? It's all right to make a motion.
Yeah, I'll move, we, uh, give one year approval to the, what's this called?
Bus shelter.
Yeah, the bus shelter slash welcome center, whatever this is. And so you can inform her with your design stack.
Motion second, uh, in the discussion. I'll favor say I.
Alright.
I, post.
Thank you.
I guess I should, I really don't like the bus station, but, or the bus shelter, but. I'll go back to the bridge on this one. Stop report on current events.
Hello.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman, on this evening.
Then, any board member current events? Okay, uh, the motion to adjourn. I'll favor say I.
I.